All right, well, it is six o'clock and it looks like everybody is here. So I am calling this meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Rossen? You're muted, Commissioner Rossen.
I see that.
Here.
Commissioner Reed is absent. Assistant City Attorney Brandon Sendal?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Arnales?
Here.
All right, we will move into a period of public comment. Madam Secretary, could you please read the meeting announcement and then we will open public comment?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. There are two separate public comment periods associated with tonight's agenda. The Commission will take general public comment during Agenda Items number three and number 10. If you wish to speak during any of these public comment periods, you will need to access the Zoom link shown here or provided on the agenda located on the city's website under Boards and Commissions. You can also join the meeting by telephone by dialing 1-669-900-6833, and the meeting ID number is 921-2543-1451. This will join you by audio to the meeting. You will be prompted by the Chair or the Secretary when public comment is open. Use the Zoom features or press star nine on your telephone to request to speak. Please note that pressing star nine once will raise your hand to speak. Pressing it again will lower your hand. Please make sure your hand is raised if you wish to speak. Individuals shall limit their comments to three minutes per Nevada Revised Statute 241.020. Thank you.
All right, public comment is now open. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
I do not have any requests to speak at this time.
All right, if there are none, then we will close public comment and move on to the next item, which is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner West?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Any seconds?
I will second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Rossen. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed? Is absent, sorry. Assistant City Attorney Brandon Sendal?
No, all right. This was a vote, I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries. So, sounds like it passes unanimously. We will, we will move on to approval of the minutes. So we'll start with the review and possible approval of the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021 study session meeting. Can I get a motion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of our meeting from February 2nd, 2021 as submitted. All 39 pages look good to me.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Kramer?
I second that motion, Mr. Chair.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, may we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Reed is absent.
All right, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. So we will move on to review and possible approval of the minutes of the February 4th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this two for two. I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of our meeting from February 5th, 2021 as submitted.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner West. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Reed is absent.
All right, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we have no public hearing items on the agenda tonight, so we will move straight to general business. So item number six, PCN 07038, consideration of and possible action on a request to approve modifications to the architectural building elevations for an existing retail building in Zone AB of the Legends Plan Development located at 1330 Shields Drive, Sparks, Nevada, in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends and Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook.
Okay. Does everyone see the presentation?
Yep.
Oh, good. I apologize on Tuesday for the technical difficulties. IT ended up having to get into my computer and make some repairs. So that seemed to have been part of the problem. So, good evening, Chair Pritzos, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, I am Danny Ray, Planner. This is a request to approve the proposed elevations for an existing building located within the Plan Development Legends at Sparks Marina Destination Retail Development. Going forward, this Legends handbook will be referred to as Handbook. So this is a request for modifications to existing elevations for a 9,964 square foot retail building located at 1330 Shields Drive in Zone AB of the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development on a parcel that is 16.47 acres in size, just north of Shields Drive and southwest of the primary roundabout. Here's a roundabout, and located in red is where this particular tenant space is located. And for your orientation, this overall site map shows a specific location of the tenant space located on the exterior of the main shopping center, also shown here in red. The city originally approved the handbook in 2006 and most recently amended the handbook in 2020. Pursuant to the handbook, review of architectural elevations by the Planning Commission is required for retailers whose business frontages are on the exterior of the main shopping center, as well as out parcel structures. The building has exterior frontage and therefore is subject to the requirement of the handbook. The applicant has provided detailed architectural elevations that illustrate both colors and materials for the Planning Commission to review, which we will get to in a moment. The design standards in the handbook require conformance with city regulations and requires that each new building be consistent with the existing structures within the Legends Plan Development. The Planning Commission must consider the handbook standards for architecture and the commercial building design standards in the Sparks Municipal Code. The code currently serves as the City of Sparks Design Manual referred to in the handbook. Architecture standards found in the handbook include the following. Architectural design of surrounding retailers and out parcel structures shall conform to the City of Sparks Design Standards Manual. The architectural design and exterior building materials shall be consistent with the architectural design of the main center. Building walls shall be articulated on all sides using different wall planes, material changes, color differentiation, and architectural detail. The various buildings in the development shall have a common palette of colors and materials, but may be varied in terms of heights, quantities of material, architectural treatments, and relationship with site elements. Exterior finished materials shall primarily be stucco, manufactured stone, architectural cast stone, glass, and brick in varying combinations. The design standards also establish the palette of materials to be present on all sides of the building. In this case, only the front elevation is being modified. This metal standing seam roof treatment is existing and presents as an important architectural and focal feature of the entrance to the main shopping center. Staff has worked with the applicant to retain a portion of the metal roof to maintain the symmetry and balance in this focal feature. Combined, these design features meet the architectural standards of the handbook in both wall and plain articulation materials and colors. The proposed building and roof elevations conform to the commercial architectural standards in the handbook and design standards in the Sparks Municipal Code by using color and plain changes in combination with height and material variations on both the facade and the roof line. Exterior finished materials include masonry, metal, glass, stone, EIFs stucco, and standing seam metal roofing. Stone is used in the four existing columns in front of the building below the roof line. These elements, combined with the glass windows and blue awnings, provide visual interest at the pedestrian level. The upper elements of the building's facade include the addition of a parapet while maintaining portions of the existing standing seam roof. The parapet design is repeated throughout the Legends Retail Development, and carrying those elements to this building ties together the various design elements in the main shopping center. The color choices include, for the facade, oyster shell for the frame and cornice, both EIFs stucco in China white, roof pilasters in Amarillo white, and standing seam metal roof, the color to match the existing. Staff believes that the proposed building elevations comply with the standards in the Legends at Sparks Marina Handbook and the Sparks Municipal Code and recommends approval by the Planning Commission. This concludes my presentation, and I have placed a slide with a suggested motion should the Planning Commission choose to approve. I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Danny. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Seeing none, is the applicant here? And do they have anything they would like to add to staff's presentation?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Dominic Gonzalez. I'm with Leopard Construction, and we're working with Red Development. And I don't have anything to add. I think Danny described it perfectly. And like she said, we worked together on it with him a little bit to get it to that point. So, all good on my end.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, is there any, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Kramer?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amended architectural elevations for an existing retail building in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I will check in.
Oh, Commissioner Rossen beat you to it, Commissioner West. So we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer and a second by Commissioner Rossen. Any further discussion? Commissioner West, is your hand still raised from previous, or do you have something?
No, I apologize, I didn't load.
Oh, no worries, no worries. All right, so, seeing no further discussion, can we go to a roll call vote?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed is absent.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item seven, PCN 08023, consideration of and possible action on a request to approve modifications to the architectural building elevations for an existing retail building in Zone B of the Legends Plan Development located at 1315 Shields Drive, Sparks, Nevada, in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook.
Good evening, Chair Pritzos, members of the Planning Commission. Again, for the record, Danny Ray, Planner. I do apologize, there may be some repetition here. We are dealing with two very like projects in the Legends Plan Development area. So many of the standards are the same, so there'll be some repetition. So this is a request to approve the proposed elevations for an existing building located within the Plan Development Legends at Sparks Marina Destination Retail Development. As in my last presentation, going forward, I'll be referring to the handbook as Handbook. Please note that there is an error in your staff report. I inadvertently listed Red Development as the property owner when in fact Sparks GRF2 LLC, or the Garrity Group, is the property owner. We apologize for the oversight. The retail building formerly occupied by the electronics retailer Best Buy is a 29,537 square foot tenant space located at 1315 Shields Drive in Zone B of the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development on a parcel that is 4.1 acres in size, located southwest of the intersection of Shields Drive and Big Fish Drive, and is shown here on this map adjacent to the I-80, and shown in red. And this is a plan view of the building shown from aerial view. City originally approved the handbook in 2006, most recently amending it in 2020. Again, pursuant to the handbook, review of architectural elevations by the Planning Commission is required for retailers whose business frontages are on the exterior of the main shopping center, as well as out parcel structures. The building is an out parcel structure and therefore subject to this requirement of the handbook. The applicant has therefore provided detailed architectural elevations that illustrate both colors and materials for the Planning Commission to review. The design standards in the handbook do require conformance with city regulations and require that each new building is consistent with the rest of Legends. Planning Commission must consider the handbook standards and the Sparks Municipal Code standards for commercial buildings. The code currently serves as the City of Sparks Design Manual referred to in the handbook. Architectural standards found in the handbook include the following. Architectural design of surrounding retailers and out parcel structures shall conform to local regulations, and the architectural design and exterior building materials shall be consistent with the architectural design and materials of the main retail center. Building walls shall be articulated on all sides using different wall planes, material changes, color differentiation, and architectural detail, and to share a common palette of colors and materials with the Plan Development as a whole. Permitted is variation in heights, quantities of material, architectural treatments, and relationship with site elements. The proposed building and roof elevations conform to the commercial architecture standards in the handbook and design standards from the Sparks Municipal Code by enhancing roof line plane changes and color variation on the facade of the building in a manner that is consistent with the main retail center. This elevation represents the current state of the building with the former tenant's branded facade treatment. As proposed, a parapet roof, a common thematic roof treatment present throughout Legends, will be added to the front building elevation after the removal of the blue triangle shape associated with the previous tenant. Including this design element visually connects the modified building elevation of the outbuilding to the main shopping center. The proposed modifications to the building elevations conform to the commercial architecture standards in the handbook and design standards in the Sparks Municipal Code by enhancing roof line plane changes and color variation on the facade of the building in a manner that is consistent with the main retail center. There are no significant changes proposed to the pedestrian level of the building other than the addition of brick on the wall, right here, to match existing materials. No changes are proposed to the existing exterior finished masonry, metal, glass, and EIFs stucco materials. Materials and colors proposed for the parapet elements and the exterior upper walls are as follows. For the parapet facade, pearl, ash, and dover sky. The exterior upper walls, EIFs stucco, sandalwood beige. Other colors shown here are to match colors to existing architectural features of the building. Staff believes the proposed building elevations comply with the standards in the Legends at Sparks Marina Handbook and the Sparks Municipal Code and recommends approval by the Planning Commission. And this concludes my presentation. I have placed a slide with suggested motion should the Planning Commission choose to approve, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Danny. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, is the applicant here for this item? And would they like to add anything to the presentation?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I, this is Dominic with Leopard Construction, again, working with Garrity Group on this one. And Danny did great, again. The only thing that I would add is around the west side of the building, there's existing parapets, little pop-out that are painted blue to match that wedge. There we go. We're just gonna paint that to match, same with the material board that was presented earlier. So, other than that, all great on my end, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner West?
I'm ready to suggest a motion.
All right, go ahead.
I move to approve the modification to the architectural elevations for an existing retail building in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook.
All right, and do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments before, before the record. I appreciate the clarification by Dominic on the, that the west side, where the Best Buy sign, the blue Best Buy sign was, they'll be colored over. I think staff did a good job with this report, and I concur with their recommendations. I like the proposed changes. I think that removing the blue colors and the triangle shape in the front of the building will help make this building more in compliance with the, with the standards in the handbook. And I think it'll help better match the rest of the shopping center. I also think that the proposed changes will hopefully make it easier for the applicant to lease out the space, and it'll bring more vibrancy to this area of Legends. It's been vacant for a while, and it'd be great to see more businesses in there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed is absent.
All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. So we will move on to item eight, review and possible amendment of the Sparks Planning Commission Rules of Procedure.
Thank you, Chairman Pritzos. Brandon Sendal, Assistant City Attorney for the Record. The rules of procedure are reviewed annually by the Planning Commission. It takes a majority vote of the Commission to make any amendments or changes to the rules. This agenda item is intended to serve as an opportunity for the Commission to review the rules. Staff has proposed some recommended changes. I'll go ahead and go through that now. Let me share my screen. See a document that says Rules of Procedure?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll just go ahead and do a quick page turn. Here in Section 1, staff's just recommended some clarifying language, mainly removing the "therein", since that's kind of a vague legalese word, just to clarify that, you know, planning commissioners should be residents and registered voters at all times throughout their terms of office. Section 2 is just another clarifying change. In Section 5 and 6 here and below, this is one of the larger changes that staff is recommending, just to remove terms chairman and chair, or vice chairman, and replace them with chair and vice chair, just to use gender neutral titles, given the diverse makeup of the Planning Commission, especially since Commissioner Reed was the most recent chair. It's my understanding that that was past practice to refer to a female chairman or chair position as the chair. And this is generally consistent with, you know, other changes in the NRS and other rules and regulations across the country, really, just to remove the gendered titles in bodies like this. So, these proposals would change all of the references to chairman to chair and vice chairman to vice chair throughout. Right here in the vice chair section, under Section B, just addresses incapacitation that doesn't quite lead to death when the vice chair assumes the duties of the chair. Moving down to Section 4, this, this change cleans up an internal reference. This, these two sections, subsection A and B, refer to when the Commission is appointing a commission to a committee or is going to establish a committee or subcommittee. Previously, it referred to the mechanism to make a motion under public hearing items. But given that these actions would just be general business instead of a public hearing item, staff is recommending removing that citation to just clarify that, you know, any establishments of committees or subcommittees and then appointments on those committees must be placed on the agenda for, for action by the, by the Commission. Moving down on to page 5 here in subsection B, I've just recommended replacing the word decision for action. That's the, that's the word used in the, in the Open Meeting Law, NRS Section 241. So, it's just to be consistent with Nevada's Open Meeting Law. Some more changes for the chairman and vice chairman titles. Here in general business subsection G3, the existing reference here to the procedure for a motion refers to a subsection F8, or excuse me, G8, but under a previous revision, that is now F8. Right here, it's actually 8, or excuse me. It's F, Public Hearing Items, 8, Calling for Emotion. So, that, that just cleans up that internal reference. In Section 4, Citizens Rights, the existing rules address, you know, the manner of addressing the Commission and, you know, the contours of how that works. But we don't really have the, the exact language or, or the requirements just to, for general public comment. So, I've recommended an inclusion of a new subsection A that basically solidifies what's required under the Open Meeting Law as far as general open comment, and then obviously open comment during public hearing items. And that, the main intent here, obviously, we do that anyway, but it's to, just for ease of reference, in case there is an issue, we would have that at the ready. And this, this language is, is almost verbatim taken out of the Nevada Open Meeting Law manual. So it's just to establish what public comment should be allowed. Moving on, at the study session, I noted that there, there was an issue with the previous recommended changes here in what was subsection D, what's now subsection E. I amended that here to make this clear that a group of people or an organization can make comments or petitions or communications to the, to the committee, or excuse me, the Commission, as a group through a representative. I, I've recommended striking the last item because it, it kind of muddies the water as far as whether, whether the Chair should allow it during all agenda items and not just public hearing items, or, or how that works if, if there's a different standard. So then, by removing that last section about, or that last clause during the Commission's consideration of the agenda item, if the Chairman agrees, so let them be heard. The intent there is then- The intent there is then just general public comment rules under Nevada's open meeting law would apply. And then this section would just address, uh, group or multi-person or representative, uh, communications and public comment. Moving down, this is the last substantive change. This was mainly in response, if, if you recall, there was a, a, a motion that failed. The, the issue is if a motion fails, that's technically not action. If, if, if there's a motion to approve and it, and it loses, then that doesn't mean that the commission voted to deny or vice versa. There needs to be a second motion on that. So I think it's easier to, to, to start with section 10, failure of a motion. If, uh, a, a, a motion calling for affirmative action is not the equivalent of, of a denial, vice versa. I've recommended excluding the, except in the case of a tie vote because we get into some, some, uh, some technicalities on the tie vote that I'll address here in, in section eight. Because like, like the failure of a motion, if it's say a three to four vote, a tie vote is actually failure of a motion as well because it didn't receive the majority vote that's required. So that, this clarifies that the tie vote is a technical denial of the pending motion, but it would allow the chair to, um, to call or allow for an alternative motion after that tie vote. And I believe that is it. I'm available for any questions or any, uh, comments or recommendations.
All right. Uh, thank you very much, Brandon. Are there any, uh, questions? Yes, Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions and I may have a suggestion of another possible, addition to, to the rules and procedures later, but just a couple of questions for Brandon. Um, I'm curious why, um, a, a commission deliberation on making an appointment to a committee, why that would be a general business item and not a public hearing item?
Well, I mean, the, under, under statute, there are specific items that, that require a public hearing. And, you know, the, the appointment of commissioners to, to committees or subcommittees wouldn't fall under that. It would just be a general business item.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that, that clarification. And my other, my other question is with respect to the revised language on, um, subsection or section four subsection E with the group presentations, we had a great discussion, um, Tuesday on, on that one. I was just curious, who would make the determination of whether or not a group can make a presentation or present some sort of a protest? Is that still at the discretion of the, the chair to make that call or?
Yeah, I, I think it would, but, but, cause really under, under general comment, anybody can make a comment, uh, as long as it's, you know, within the bounds of what the planning commission does and not disruptive or, or attacking, you know, any, any of the other, uh, time, place and manner restrictions that the open meeting law allows. So really if there is a group, they, they could one by one make a, make a comment or a protest or communication, but this would allow, just, it would, it would clarify that, you know, there could be a representative that, that, um, the chair could allow to speak on behalf of a group.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And really that's, that's my understanding of the purpose of this rule as it was originally created. I, I just think that that last clause was, was troublesome because it, it, it implied that the chair should allow comment during all, all agenda items, including general business. And certainly that's in the chair's discretion, but, um, I, I, I just thought it was a little confusing.
I agree. Thank you for that clarification.
Of course.
All right. Are there any other questions at this time?
Commissioner?
Oh, Commissioner Kramer.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Brandon, thank you very much for the clarification on, on the presentation of Malta, the, that section. I really appreciate you cleaning it up. It, it gives a little bit more clarity to it and I really appreciate the work that you've done on the rules itself. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Of course. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo those comments. Um, and thanks for, uh, kind of humoring us and, and doing some extra work on that, uh, that one section about the, uh, public comment. I know we had some recommendations and, you know, thank you for taking those into account and getting back to us so quickly with what I think is a, a really good or at least a much clearer, uh, set of guidelines. So are there any other, uh, discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this afternoon I was doing some of my required training for, um, regional planning and I was skimming through NRS and I noticed that there's a specific statute. Um, it's NRS 278.050, section one, which, um, I interpreted to require that the planning commission must meet at least one, once per month. And looking through our, um, meeting or our rules and procedures, in particular, um, article five, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that there's anything in, um, in our rules and procedures that references this statute. And I know there's been times where we've had months where we, we haven't met as a commission. So I wanted to, um, kind of throw out there a possible, um, change for, for the commission. And let me see if I may be able to share my screen here. Okay. Um, and this would be article four, um, subsection E, and I believe that's on page five of the, uh, the revision. Um, so basically this is the subset, this is the section that talks about there, you know, if we don't have a meeting, we, and it's canceled, we, we post a notice as required by law and our staff does a great job with that. I would, I would propose in my mock-up here that after, as required by law, we would add in, provided however, that the commission shall hold at least one regular meeting in each month as required by NRS 278.050, section one.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Um, Brandon, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, I, I agree that, that is what the statute says. It says, uh, shall hold at least one regular meeting each month. And I think it makes sense, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna amend the rules to, to put that in there, that that's a, that place, uh, would make sense.
All right. Uh, so then, um, that being said, if, if we are making a, a motion on this, uh, agenda item, then, um, should we, I, I'm assuming that we should specify that we would also like to add, uh, Commissioner Carey's request to, um, what you've already presented to us, correct?
Yeah. Well, then the motion would be to, to adopt the, the changes as recommended by staff in addition to the, the, the language recommended by Commissioner Carey.
All right. That makes sense. Uh, so is there any further discussion? All right. See done. Uh, who wants to take a stab at this?
I'll take a stab at it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioner Kramer, go ahead.
I move to approve the amendments to the Sparks Planning Commission Rules of Procedures proposed by staff in addition to adding the language in NRS regarding the once a month meeting as proposed by Commissioner Carey. Does that, does that work, Brandon?
I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
All right.
It was a red line. I think that's in the record.
All right. Uh, Commissioner West.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer and a second by Commissioner West. Any last minute discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Commissioner Kramer, for that excellent motion. I appreciate the, uh, the inclusion of that, of that change and thank you, Brandon, for your work on this.
Welcome.
All right.
Was there, was there, though, I'm sorry?
No, we haven't, we, we haven't voted yet.
Okay. Just making sure.
Uh, any, any last, last discussion? All right. Seeing none, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Reed is absent.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. So we will move on to item nine, selection of a commissioner to serve as the first alternate on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission effective immediately from the following pool of applicants, Marilyn Kramer and Mike Rossit. Who would like to make a motion? Yeah, Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would like to make a motion to appoint, um, Commissioner Kramer as our first alternate for regional planning.
All right. Is there a second? Commissioner West.
And I would like to second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner West. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, may we go to a roll call vote?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Reed is absent.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I think I'm the other alternate. So welcome to the, welcome to the alternate.
Thank you.
All right. So we will now move on to item 10, uh, public comment. Madam Secretary, could you read the meeting announcement and then we will open public comment?
Thank you, Chair Pritzos. This is a general public comment period. The telephone number for call-in participation during this general public comment period is 1-669-900-6833 and the meeting ID is 92125431451. Use star nine to request to speak. You may also join by using the Zoom link displayed here on the screen and found on the agenda on the boards and commissions, um, page on the website. Use the Zoom features to request to speak.
All right. Public comment is now open. Uh, do we have anyone in the public who wishes to speak at this time?
We do have one request to speak.
All right.
Mr. Emery, you should be able to speak now.
It looks like you're muted.
There we go.
There we go.
Very good. Uh, Chair Pritzos, uh, and fellow commissioners, uh, my apologies for coming in in the second public comment and I would be remiss if I did not thank, uh, Secretary Smith for reading my open forum comment in the first, uh, prison that that occurred. We actually signed on at 5:30 and realized after a few minutes went by, I asked the hour of six that we needed to reboot Zoom. So I will not, uh, take any more time. Uh, Mary Lee, thank you for doing that for us. We appreciate it. And I want to simply, uh, uh, thank the, uh, commissioners for allowing us to give voice about the traffic safety concerns in the city of Sparks on behalf not only of, uh, DeAndrea, now as they sometimes say the lower forty, but also DeAndrea Ranch Phase Three, my counterpart, uh, Corey Quillman. Uh, that's really all I have. Uh, I won't use any of the three minutes that's allocated. And again, my apology for missing out on the front end, but thank you very much, uh, for recognizing me for a comment at this point. Have a good evening, everybody.
Mr. Emery, before you go, um, I, I don't want to speak primarily, but I, I, the, uh, public comment that you submitted was not read at the opening. I believe Ms. Smith was giving you the opportunity to do it at the back end if you wanted to, uh, or.
I, I, I'd be, I'd be delighted to do that, Brandon. It's only a minute and a half long, so you can go ahead and start that 2:30.
So.
Thank you and the comment follows.
Mr. Mr. Emery?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I just want to let you know that your, your transmission is a little bit broken. I do want you to be aware of that. At least it is on my end.
Very good. I'll get a little closer then. Thank you, Mary Lee.
You're welcome.
Thank you and good evening, commissioners. My name is George Emery. As president of the DeAndrea Community Association, I join with my colleague and president, DeAndrea Ranch Phase Three, President Corey Quillman. Uh, we seek your assistance in response to DeAndrea residents progressively increasing distress and consternation about traffic safety, speeding in particular, actually, amidst the building traffic volumes in DeAndrea. Mayor Lawson and city council members were previously apprised of these issues on March 8 and received material similar to those that are presented to you for consideration this evening. The new footnoted document before you provides a more expansive in-depth review of traffic safety-related issues accompanied by observations and questions which are born out of the DeAndrea community concerns. Your council commissioners, in concert with previously acknowledged expertise and ongoing support of city manager crewed staff is essential to DeAndria's pursuit of effective near-term traffic safety solutions as well as out-year planning and management of steadily increasing vehicular traffic volume. Thank you, commissioners, again for the opportunity to amplify DeAndria's traffic safety concerns. We look forward to your guidance and response. And again, very best regards and a good evening.
All right. Thank you very much for that comment. Um, and the comment has been put into the public, oh, Mary Lee.
So Chair Pritzos, I would just like to add to the record at the direction of Assistant City Attorney Brandon Sendall that we did receive a package of information from the DeAndrea Homeowners Association. Together with Mr. Emery's, um, verbal presentation here tonight, we also received 29 pages of, um, information regarding their concerns over traffic. Those 29 pages have been shared with the commissioners and have also been posted on the website. And I just would like the record to reflect that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mary Lee. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment?
There are no additional requests to speak.
All right. With that, then we will close public comment and then move on to, uh, item 11, announcement from staff and commissioners. Uh, so we'll start with staff.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is Armando Ranelles, Assistant Community Services Director, Chair Pritzos and members of the commission. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, make you aware of the fact that on Monday, on the 22nd, at the city council meeting, there is an agenda item, uh, for the council to consider the mayor's proposed appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission. So that would be, uh, the, the replacement for former Commissioner Peterson. And the, uh, mayor is recommending, uh, Clara and Driola, uh, to serve, uh, that partial term out. So again, just wanted you to be aware of it, that, uh, that, that could, appointment could happen as early as next week and then presumably that, um, Ms. Adriola would be available for the next meeting in the planning commission.
All right. Thank you, Armando. Um, are there any announcements from members of the commission? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanted to extend my best wishes to, uh, Frank Peterson and his family. Frank recently resigned from the commission. I, I have enjoyed working with Frank on the commission over the past five years and, um, want to thank him for his longtime service to the city and wish him all the best.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. I think we all, uh, were gonna miss, miss Frank. Are there any other announcements from staff or members of the commission? All right. See none. Uh, we will move on to item 12. So there is no further business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, Commissioner West.
I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
I will second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Kramer. Uh, may we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed is absent.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Alright, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. See you next month, everyone. Here, everyone.
Good night.